Okay, we'll call the June 4th regular board meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting. We are glad you are here. Before we begin, we'd like to share a few reminders. Please keep the aisles clear during our meeting to allow members of the school system and the Sheriff's Department to be able to move about. Also, except for when honoring the flag and our opening prayer and when participating in the call to audience, please remain seated during our meeting. We hope to have a productive and efficient meeting and your help is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. At this point, Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Pete Wildeboer.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Jessie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Crable.
Here.
Hugh McManus. And Stephanie Walker.
Is Ms. Walker on remotely? All right, well, board members, thank you for being here this evening. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pass is five zero. For five, yes, that's correct. I am going to read all of this because there's some very, very important stuff, so bear with me for just a moment, please. Our invocation this evening will be given by Sam Nolan, member of the pastoral staff at Port City Community Church remotely. The Hogard High School NJ ROTC Color Guard Unit will provide the presentation of colors and is under the direction of Commander David Everett and Staff Sergeant Richard Gualdado, excuse me, Principal Chris Madden. And finally, our National Anthem will be done by the Cottington Elementary Chorus. Will provide the National Anthem under the direction of Dr. Amanda Hope, music teacher, and Principal Pamela Biggs. Cottington Chorus has been invited to perform in the Opera Wilmington's production of Tosca this summer. July 19th, 21st, 26th, and 28th are the dates. Additionally, students Kira Finn Cannon and Sarah Dewire were selected to participate in the North Carolina Elementary Honors Chorus and more importantly, the OAKE National Children's Chorus. These children are performing in the, in Chicago, were, excuse me, were performing in Chicago back in March when the other singers were recognized for honors chorus. So it will be a wonderful few minutes. At this point, we will have our invocation.
Hello, my name is Sam Nolan and I am on staff at Port City Community Church and I'm going to be leading us in our beginning prayer for today. So by your heads listening. Lord, we just thank you for today, Father. We thank you for a chance to be in the space, Lord, for this meeting today and for these people that are in attendance, Father. God, we thank you for an opportunity to just serve students and families in New Hanover County. God, we give this meeting to you. We just pray for just wisdom to discern which choices need to be made, Lord, and which things to go after for the health of our schools and the health of our teachers, Father. God, we just thank you that we get to do this every day, Lord, to get to serve families and people, Lord. God, we just thank you for this morning and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, we've asked Ms. Mason to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to ask you if you would introduce your group.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Amanda Hope and I am the music teacher at Cottington Elementary School. And I'm so excited to introduce the 4th and 5th grade choir at Cottington Elementary. So I'm going to hand the mic over. They'll just say their first and last names and pass it.
Hi, I'm Fiona Adams.
Madeline Mae Davidson.
Liliadare Thompson.
Tenley Smith.
Wayland Shepherd.
Mias Murashak.
Samuel Benoit.
Calice Bush.
Josephine James.
Owen Favrell.
Banks Fallis.
Izzy Haugh.
Calliope Rhodes.
Quinn Martin.
Sarah Dewire.
Catherine Marinos.
Sophia Pressley.
Elena Fox.
Edie Davis.
Paul Gagny.
Ellyn King.
Genevieve Banks.
Samuel Lewis.
Kendall Moore.
Alexis Tarp.
Amelia McAdams.
Kira Finn Cannon.
Nicholas Williams.
Adam Ewa.
Ellery Clark.
Lucia Layvan.
Eloise Carr.
Sophie Ford.
And I forgot to introduce Airly Hope. She was joining me this evening.
Would you please join me as we give them one more round of applause? Thank you very much. And now I'm going to ask our junior ROTC gentlemen to introduce themselves.
My name is Cadet Ensign Owen Samuels. I'm color guard commander, so I'm in charge of this business and, yeah, it's fun.
Hello, I'm Cadet PO1 Connor McAuliffe.
Cadet Ensign Mark Evans.
I'm Cadet Zachary Brooks, PO2.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here tonight. All right, thank you all again for being here this evening. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I know we've had some changes today. I will make that motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all, is there any discussion? Ms. Crable?
Yes, on the May, the 7th, May regular board meeting minutes, there is no reflection in the minutes that defined, that we even talked about, an emergency situation that was occurring in our area. And they do not reflect that I raised the issue that we were violating board policies, specifically Policy 2330 and 2410. So I respectfully ask that we get some verbiage in there so that anybody who doesn't watch the YouTube video can read in our minutes and know what we discussed.
Ms. Bradford?
And I would bring your attention to, oh, golly. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven or eight. This is going to be under X16 Policy 7300 and Policy 3200 on the right-hand side of the page. I just want to bring your attention to Board Member Pat Bradford's moves to continue with present legal representation Vogel Law Firm. That's at the top of that paragraph. At the bottom, it says, "Ms. Crable inquires if Mr. Vogel would be willing to continue his legal services." We all know that he said he would be honored. And Ms. Crable asked if we needed to vote on Mr. Vogel to continue his legal services. Mr. Vogel confirmed the motion could be voted on, can be voted on, and you called for the votes. But I just want to make sure that everyone remembers that's what happened last month so we don't get confused in what we do today.
Okay, but let's go back to Ms. Crable's first motion or corrections. Can you repeat those, please?
Yeah. Thank you. Policy, in Policy 7300 and 3200, the minutes do not reflect that these changes were only temporary due to an emergency situation that was never locally defined, nor do they reflect Stephanie Crable's issue that was raised that we were violating board policies to do so, specifically Policies 2330 Board Agendas and 2400 New Policy Development.
And Mr. Wilber? If you look at the top of that Policy 7300 and 3200 on the same side of the page, it says, "Board Member Pat Bradford moves to temporarily adopt." It is mentioned there.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, we, we did not define the emergency situation to a local situation and it does not reflect my insistence, which led to the private consultation with the board chair about we were violating board policies. So Ms. Bradford is right in that she did say temporary and I did reflect that in my comments here.
Okay, so you'd just like to add verbiage saying that you had said that it was not, that it was never defined with the temporary.
I want, yeah, I would like the verbiage to reflect, I would like the minister to reflect that we declared this temporary policy change based on an emergency that was never defined locally and that my issues were not reflected in the fact that I thought we were violating board policies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I suggest we move this off the agenda for today and redo it for next month?
That's a good idea. Could we do that?
No, because I don't know what we're going to discuss. We've all watched the video and we all remember the recess where you and I went and had a private conversation and came back. We asked Mr. Vogel again to say why these policies were not being violated and that is not reflected anywhere. So I would like for us to approve those with those additions. I don't think we need to go back and stew over it again. But if that's the only way to do it, I guess we can, but I don't.
You, can you define exactly what you'd like to have added verbiage?
Okay, I did. The, the minutes do not reflect that the changes were only temporary due into an emergency situation that was never locally defined, nor do they reflect Stephanie Crable raised the issues that we were violating two other board policies to do so, specifically Policy 2330 Board Agendas and 2410 New Policy Development.
Well, why don't we take a vote on that? So all in favor of adding that verbiage, please signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair?
If I may, I don't know that there was a second. Oh.
It wasn't a motion.
It was a correction?
Yes, it was just a correction to the minutes. There's not a motion needed.
And Mr. Chair, I would object. I did state a reason for the emergency, so I would object to that language.
Ms. Bradford, I am not disputing. Mr. Chair, I am not, thank you for the poo, Ms. Barnhart.
We have a point of order. Yes, ma'am.
She's telling me to shut up, is what she's doing.
She is, she's speaking next term.
Right.
I am not, I am not.
I feel that that is not applicable at this time. Go ahead.
I am not disputing the fact that it was temporary. We all agreed to that. But what I'm saying is that we made this temporary change and, but we did not state what the local emergency was. And I want that in, because all we stated was that a flag came down at Chapel Hill and touched the ground, which are, you know, they're not local to us. So that, but we didn't, we didn't put anything in there that we had a pretty robust discussion on that. That's all I want noted, is that we had a robust discussion about the, the emergency situation.
Okay.
And that I raised issues with we were possibly violating two policies. And I just wanted that reflected.
Okay, and Ms. Bradford, you said that you didn't make mention of, that what the.
Yes, I did. And I would say, let's move this to next month. We can hash this out. We have a very robust meeting tonight and every minute counts.
Okay.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, we'll move that policy on to, or excuse me, that, those notes back on to next month's meeting. So can we go ahead and vote on the other two there in front of us, please? A motion that we accept the special board meeting and the agenda review at 5:30 and 5:29. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pass is five zero. Just double checking, Ms. Walker's still not on? She's not, okay, thank you. All right, we are moving on to recognitions.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and we're excited to share quite a few wonderful recognitions today. First up is Krista Jones. Krista Jones knows that her job as cafeteria manager at College Park Elementary is so much more than meal planning and budgeting and managing staff. It's about being a touch point of care and warmth for a child who might not otherwise get that each day. It's about nourishment from the inside out. She takes so much pride in the whole child approach to her job that it will bring her to tears just to talk about it. She takes so much pride that her work shines bright, not just at the local level, but throughout the state where she has been recognized as the finest child nutrition manager in North Carolina. Tonight, we get to recognize, yeah. Tonight, we get to recognize Ms. Jones for her dedication to children's well-being and for creating a space of warmth, community, and positivity. Krista Jones, Child Nutrition Manager of the Year for North Carolina. Congratulations. All right. Our next honorees will travel to Washington DC this summer to compete in the National History Day competitions. We are recognizing them for their accomplishments as scholars and researchers, but we also want to acknowledge how much these young people understand that our history is not our past, that our present is, is defined by our triumphs and our tragedies, that our connection to our roots, that our appreciation for diverse perspectives and experiences, that our ability to recognize the challenges from our past make us stronger and better able to be resilient and lead into a better future. Congratulations to all of our National History Day winners. Please hold your applause until all have come forward. The first is Holly Shelter Middle School students Olivia Stettler and Zippora Tonnage, who earned some incredible honors. In addition to taking home first place in the Junior Group Exhibit, their project on the 1898 Wilmington racially motivated coup and massacre won the HG Jones North Carolina History Award from the State Archives and it will be displayed at the Smithsonian Museum in Washington DC. Olivia and Zippora will have the opportunity to spend an entire day at the Smithsonian sharing information with the public about their project and get a behind-the-scenes tour of the museum and its artifacts. And joining them in DC for the National History Day competition will be Hannah Davis, Leo Burisma, Sophia Catino, William King from New Hanover High School, Scott McFarlane from Isaac Bear Early College, and Abigail Blair and Lila Varnum from the International School at Gregory. You may all come forward. Congratulations. All right. 60 years ago, the Wilmington Kiwanis Club began a scholarship program for New Hanover County School students who would attend UNCW and later Cape Fear Community College. Since then, they've given more than $200,000 to local students pursuing their educational dreams. Since 1920, the Kiwanis Club of Wilmington has supported children in our community through their efforts to educate, combat poverty, and support inclusivity. And we are incredibly grateful to have them as community partners and for their six decades of scholarship support, which has had lasting impact on our community and its future leaders. So if there's a representative from the Kiwanis Club, come on forward. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Hogard High School student Krish Mishra has made volunteering a pivotal part of his life for years. He earned his Eagle Scout badge and through that process, distributed hundreds of safety kits to New Hanover County School students. He's also volunteered for hundreds of hours at the Novant Children's Hospital, among other commitments. And last month, Krish was awarded the Congressional Bronze Medal from Representative David Browser, an exceptional honor that celebrates his commitment to personal development, community service, and leadership. This prestigious award reflects his dedication, perseverance, and outstanding achievements. And we're incredibly proud, not only of his hard work and determination, but also of his commitment to giving back to his community and the children in it. Congratulations. All right. Cashmere James of New Hanover High School is not only the fastest young person in North Carolina to run the 400-meter dash, he's the fastest to do it since many of us, present company excluded, were born. Last month, he broke the North Carolina state record last set in 1983. He ran that distance a quarter of a mile in just 46.2 seconds. What we always say about student athletes is that their accomplishments are not just a reflection of their physical talent. It's about their perseverance, their grit, and their commitment to bettering themselves and showing up for the people who believed in them. Cashmere attributed his victory to his aunt, who was there for him, his coach, and his teammates. And he said that junior year, he realized, quote, "I just wasn't fast enough and I worked hard to get faster." Congratulations to Cashmere for bringing this incredible title home to New Hanover County and for all it took for you to earn it. Please come forward to accept your recognition. Too fast for us. Our career and technical education students and teachers are doing extraordinary work that is preparing our future community leaders to excel in a huge variety of fields and trades. Recently, students from Ashley High School and Wilmington Early College High School received recognition for their efforts with a statewide award that qualified them to compete at the national level this summer. So first, we have students from the Future Business Leaders of America. The mission of the FBLA is to inspire and prepare students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership experiences. Our FBLA students will be competing at Nationals in Orlando this summer and we are incredibly proud of them. We're also going to welcome three students who earned statewide recognition to join them. So we have From Wex, Caroline Santo, Kaylee Jones, Jacob Brown, Jada Dorsey, Evelyn Tanner, Aleah Bland, and Zoe Hutterer. Come on forward. Come on forward. We heard them coming in with all their medals. And then from Ashley High School, we have Drew Piner and Lucas Pollard. And then next, we have members of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, from Ashley High School, who have qualified for national competition in Seattle this June. And the mission of the FCCLA is to promote personal growth and leadership development through family and consumer sciences education. So congratulations to Ashley students who will compete, be competing in the following events. And we have Autumn Pfeifer, Jade and Leardo, and Ashley Thompson, competing in interpersonal communication skills. Last and certainly not least, we have our Educators of the Year. We say often how proud we are of the exceptional teachers in our district, but it isn't often that we have the opportunity to give them their flowers in a public setting. Last month, we laid it on pretty thick with our Educator of the Year celebrations. We followed up our surprise school visits with an Educator of the Year banquet at the Brooklyn Arts Center and lots of prizes and publicity, but we want to add to it now. And what I'd like to do tonight is acknowledge that these fine educators and the thousands of others they represent are doing the work. The rest of us are amplifying the work or administering the work or creating policies that dictate the work, but our educators are doing it. They're sitting at desks with kids who are nearing a breakthrough in reading or math. They're partnering with parents to give students all the wraparound support they need. They are instructional experts in every tool, in every toolbox, and they're building new toolboxes along the way to get kids not only to where they need to be, but farther along than they knew they could go. And they're really damn good at it. So congratulations to our Educators of the Year. And more than that, thank you for the work you do and will continue to do on behalf of the children in our community. So please come forward to accept your recognitions. Brent Hall, our, Brent Hall, our Principal of the Year, Sidney Kong, our Elementary Educator of the Year, Latasha Mott Howard, our Middle School Educator of the Year, and Hannah Moon, our High School and overall Educator of the Year.
Good evening. I am here tonight to present to you our Excellence Exemplified Classified Employees Awards, and they are indeed doing the work as well. We have some nice little New Hanover County merch for them and a gift bag, but I think more importantly, there's a very generous gift card that we award these nominees with. And that wouldn't be possible without Mark III, who are our administrator of our flexible benefits. So I do want to definitely give them a shout out for the very generous gift card that is included tonight. And we have these two recipients here that'll be very happy to get that. So with that, can I invite Ms. LaShawn White up here and be accompanied by her principal? So Ms. White is a teacher assistant at Gregory. And these are the words written by her, the person who nominated her. So Ms. White is a beacon of light and committed educator for the students at Gregory. She currently runs small intervention groups and works with the students at ISS. She is a consummate professional who practices what she preaches and has been doing so at Gregory for over 20 years. She does not expect anything that she isn't willing to demonstrate with her own actions or words, and I believe this is why she is so highly respected. She maintains high expectations of students, and she provides a sense of safety, security, and calm for the students and staff at Gregory. Her heart is here for the students and staff to thrive. So thank you very much and congratulations. And I think her mom is here, too. So why don't you guys come on up? She's coming up, too. Never too old to have your mom here. All right. Next, we have Mr. Ryan Callahan, and he is the Custodial Manager at Trask. You want to come on up here? Mr. Callahan has a proven track record of A inspections and is evident in his pride in keeping our building safe, clean, and inviting for our students, staff, and community. Mr. Callahan continues to inspire and lead his crew and doesn't let anything keep him from ensuring the building is ready for students to learn and teachers to teach daily. His behind the scenes work directly impacts our community's overall well-being and provides our students with the best opportunity to succeed. Because of his strong sense of pride in his work, the county has continued to ask for our school to be a professional development site and professional development for other custodians, as the cleanliness of our building is a model for the county. Mr. Callahan's work is essential because learning can best occur when the building is safe, clean, and organized. So thank you very much, Mr. Callahan. Oh, yeah. More fam- oh, more family. Come on down.
At this point, I'd like to bring forward our Student Voice folks as they will share with us. So come on up, guys. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board members. It is an honor to be able to speak with you all today. And today is a little bittersweet for me and Miles since it is our last time speaking in front of you as New Hanover County students. We will be graduating on Friday, which is super exciting. Saman Bun also wanted to be here, but unfortunately, he's out of town. But all our words echo his sentiments as well. Today, our team wanted to take some time to reflect on how far we've come and what we've learned as the first year of the Student Ambassador Team is coming to a close. A couple of years ago, as we were writing the Student Voice policy, our vision was to create a team of students that would be able to collaborate directly with the board to share their perspectives with decision-makers as the greatest stakeholders in our education. There were already some great groups in place, like the Student Engagement Teams and the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, but we saw a need for student voices to be more present at the district level. And I think it's safe to say our vision has come to life. It has been beautiful to watch the first ever Student Ambassador Team, composed of 30 middle and high school students, develop into confident leaders and share their perspectives in hopes of making our education even brighter for the next generation of New Hanover County students. The students on our team have gained skills in public speaking, listening to different perspectives, researching, writing, and have learned so much about the behind the scenes of our education system. It has been beautiful to watch each of the Student Ambassadors work hard to speak up passionately about different areas of their education where they want to see change and also the areas they are appreciative of. One of the highlights of the year was watching Lucy Titus, a sixth grader from Noble Middle School, speak with such confidence and poise at one of the board meetings a couple of months ago, if you remember that. This year, we have specifically spoken up about our perspectives on new policy changes, support for our AIG coordinators in the midst of budget cuts, and potential changes to the disparities in the class rank system. Molly Mathis, one of our new leaders, spearheaded a meeting last week with Dr. Phazen and Ms. Varnum about what policy changes would look like, and they had a productive discussion that led to an idea of even taking the issue of class rank to the state level. We are super excited about continuing the discussion on class rank and looking at some real tangible solutions with the people that can make real change. We also had the opportunity to collaborate with the Communications Division by creating a video series highlighting each of the different high schools each week. In addition, we had a very successful closing summit a couple of weeks ago where we brainstormed how to improve as a team next year and celebrated our accomplishments. We are especially grateful for Malcolm Johnson and the Communications Division for helping the event be so successful. None of this would have been possible without you, the Board of Education members, the people that sacrificed so much to benefit students. Your job is certainly not an easy one, and we are so incredibly grateful for how you have truly supported us and listened to us and will continue to listen to us. From the bottom of our hearts, we are so thankful for all that you do for us. Thank you for being patient with us as we have been working through trial and error to make our vision of this team come to life. Personally, I am so grateful for each of you. This experience for the past two years has been life-changing for me and many others. I have learned more from this experience than any other classroom or extracurricular activity I have been involved in. I and all the others on our team have learned how to compromise, collaborate, listen, learn, and just so much. The list goes on and on. Thank you so much for how you have poured into me and every New Hanover County student. You have truly shaped us all into the people we are today and the people we are becoming. Now, it is my great honor to introduce to you the new Student Ambassador Leadership Team for the 2024-2025 school year. You have seen each of these students before as they have spoken about different topics at board meetings over the past few months, and they are all incredible leaders. I am so confident that they will lead our new team of Student Ambassadors with wisdom and humility, and I can't wait to see all that they will accomplish. It is a team of six rising high school seniors, and their names are Aparna Dilipala, Molly Mathis, Krish Mishra, Lillian Rumpel, Maya Roseborough, and Tanea Toon. Most of them are here today and will now introduce themselves to you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aparna Dilipala, and I'll be a senior at Hoggard next year. And I look forward to continue collaborating with you all. For the past two years, Student Voice has been such a valuable leadership opportunity that has helped me grow personally and introduced me to so many new perspectives. I can't wait be, I can't wait to keep being involved in this incredible initiative, and I look forward to working with you next year.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hope you're not too tired of me yet. My name is Krish Mishra, and I will also be a senior at John D. Hoggard High School. I'm beyond grateful and excited to work alongside such dedicated, passionate individuals aiming to further our mission through additional collaboration and outreach. Over the past year, I have learned so much through voicing my concerns in front of you and researching vast topics impacting our county. I look forward to helping represent and elevate the voice of our students through this leadership role. Specifically, I hope to continue to facilitate discussion regarding New Hanover County's budget to help increase the allocation of funding for higher faculty pay, including but not limited to positions such as custodians, cafeteria managers, counselors, AIG coordinators, and teachers. Thank you.
Happy summer. Ooh, I'm always so tall for this, but happy summer, everyone. My name is Lillian Rumpel, and I will be a senior at New Hanover High School this upcoming year. It has been such an honor to have this opportunity to represent each of our high schools over the past school year and collaborate with my fellow ambassadors on addressing the discrepancies within our school communities. I'm so excited to not only continue this passion in my senior year, but also to have the opportunity to allow other students to express their perspectives through the platform that Student Ambassador gives. Thank you as always.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Maya Roseborough. I'm a rising senior at Isaac Bear Early College in the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. I'm thrilled and enthusiastic to form part of this leadership team in order to keep continuing and uplifting student voices in our county. I'm extremely excited to continue leading dialogue and discussion about class rank and Policy 7300 and 3200. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to collaborating with you.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Tanea Toon. I will be a senior at Laney High School. I've been a part of Student Voice since the beginning of it, and I have learned so much. And I've grown as a student, but also as a human being, with collaborating with people and adults and learning from you and taking criticism and, you know, having conversations that will impact not only our team, but the whole, you know, students of New Hanover County schools. Even though we will miss our seniors, you know, this next year, I believe our work is going to be very impactful, and I am very excited to learn more from you and to hear more about, you know, how you guys feel about what our, what our work is doing and what we're going to do in the future. So thank you, guys.
I'm Miles. I was, yeah, Miles Falak. I was a senior leader this year for Student Voices. And as I go into Student Voice retirement, I want to reminisce and just, you know, thank you guys for your collaboration with us and how you worked with us, for teaching us so much. I know I personally learned a lot. I've grown. I've made some really close friends that I hope I know for the rest of my life. I'm Cassidy and Saman especially. And as I go into retirement for this stage of my life, we'd like to present you guys with some cards and some pictures to just, you know, submit this moment in history. So if I could approach the stand.
Thank you, sweetie.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna put it right here. Thank you. Thank you so much. No, we didn't get you anything.
Ms. Beam, we also have a card and a framed picture for you because you have been just so amazing, supporting us in so many ways. We couldn't have done this without you.
Really quickly, I also just want to really emphasize our gratitude for Cassidy, Saman, and Miles. Without them, this initiative would not have elevated to where it is today and give us the opportunity to really expand on issues we feel really passionate about. So without them and their guidance this past year, none of this would have gone to where any, any of us have dreamed. So Cassidy and I have known each other since fifth, sixth grade, and seeing her accomplish so many things means a lot to me. So I'm incredibly proud of you, Cassidy. I would have said this about Saman, but he's not here. And Miles, I'm also very proud of you, too. Thank you.
And we'll miss our seniors, that's for sure. Best of luck in your futures. Thank you very much. At this time, it's my pleasure to bring forth Ms. Keisha Williams, Dean of Students at Hoggard High School, and to present on behalf of Teacher of Voice. Glad to have you here. Thank you so much for being here.
Good afternoon. Good evening to you all. Thank you to Dr. Faust and to the board for the opportunity to speak, take these off, to speak this afternoon. Again, my name is Keisha Williams, and I have the honor and the pleasure of serving as the Dean of Students at Hoggard High School. This is my, this will be my ninth year in And so, I would love to stand here and advocate on behalf of the teachers and speak this afternoon. So, I am also a product of New Hanover County Schools. Started in 1982 at Pine Valley Elementary, but I did not finish here. I moved away. We moved to Gaston County, and I finished my education there. And then, I went on to start teaching in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. And it was there that we use data to drive instruction. I worked at Title I schools until I moved to Hogard. Every school that I worked at was a Title I school. And so, huge about turning around those numbers and getting in there and not just looking at the numbers, but pushing beyond the paper and seeing the kids for who they could be, not just the numbers that were on the paper. So, with that, we did a lot of digging within our building, within the county, within the region. We did professional development, and this is where I learned the power of aligning the data to pushing our students beyond what we see. And I was reminded of this, like I said, I'm a product of New Hanover County Schools, and I was reminded of this in a conversation not too long ago with my sixth grade teacher, my math teacher, who is also my sorority sister. And she talked about how, as our group was coming in, she had a very low number of students of color who were going to be in her advanced math class. And so, she said, she went and advocated and said, "Just give me some students who can be pushed. We can look beyond the paper and use that data to push these students into these advanced courses." And so, she did just that. She had us in those classes, and as I thought back about what I was going to say tonight, I thought about her decision and how that impacted me as a learner because I could have just been in a regular class and I could have, I would have been successful. But what she did for me was that she pushed me beyond my comfort zone. And so, from that point forward, I have learned to push myself beyond the comfort zone. She didn't see me as just a number. She saw me as Keisha, a hard-working student, high achiever, who was successful. And so, I take a lot of that with me and the other teachers who have poured into me over the years, and I take that as the Dean of Students at Hogard. And this year, I was tasked with two different, two more jobs. Not only the dean to handle, to assist with discipline, but also to be the graduation coach and to be the NCSS coordinator. Both of those positions require a lot of data digging, all day, basically, looking at the numbers, looking at where our children are tracking, seeing where we can intervene and be successful with our students. And so, I push my students, looking at the data, and then I get to know my students. They come in my office all day, every day, and sometimes, not sometimes, that's not true, every day, a lot of my work happens after school because I pour so much into them. I want them to be successful beyond what we see. And so, we created interventions that support students who have not mastered content or who have behavior struggles. So, again, I use a lot of what I learned at Rowe, using those interventions that we use there, and I pour them into the students at the bigger schools. We have brought in this year mentors to work with students. Every week, we have staff members who have gone above and beyond to support students during our flex period and with after-school tutoring. We have seen so much growth in these students, not just academically but socially. They have begun to be more interactive and speak to one another. I've had students tell me, you know, "I now want to participate more in school," whereas I was a reluctant learner and I kind of sat in the background. Now, they want to be active. They want to be seen. They want to be a part of what the other students are doing, like some of the other students who just left the podium, one of my favorites, Krish, and doing great things throughout the building. Next year, we will start with data, and so, we have already started to look at the data for the students who are in the building now, who are on the bubble, is what we're calling it, those who can, with some more intervention and some more love and some more TLC and support, get over that and get into those advanced courses so that they can push beyond their comfort zones. We will use the data to make reasonable and rational decisions about the educational needs of our students. We will use our Excel and Qantile numbers along with the curriculum to create lessons that are engaging and match the needs of the students and create success with them. So, although I'm no longer in the classroom, I am always a teacher, and I'm always an advocate for teachers, and I'm always an advocate for the students. And I love the fact that I get to be a liaison between administration, teachers, parents, support staff, and the students to make sure that everybody's talking to each other so that we know what's going on in every area of the school. And my goal next year is also to incorporate more of that professional development so that more staff members can learn how to push beyond the paper and see the students and encourage them to move a little bit beyond their comfort zones. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a student. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for the multitasking that goes on in your day and for, I wrote, jotted down, "Push the students beyond their comfort zone," and we all need to remember that, you know, adults and students alike. So, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
I also want to echo that. Thank you so much for doing multiple things and with a smile on your face and getting it done. So, thank you so much for all you do. Thank you.
Moving on, we will have the superintendent's report. Dr. Faust?
We have a lot to celebrate as we close out yet another year this week, another school year this week. Tomorrow's the last day of traditional school year, and the remainder of our graduates and graduations will take place this week. We have celebrated CTEC, WEX, Isaac Bear, and TPYA graduations. This week, we continue to celebrate with career readiness academy at Mosley, Laney, Ashley, Hogard, and New Hanover High School graduations. Congratulations to all of our 2024 graduates. We celebrated each school's 24, 25 Educator of the Year, as well as the three principal nominees with the banquet at the Brooklyn Arts Center. We announced the elementary, middle, and high school educator of the year and the overall educator of the year, as well as principal of the year. Congratulations to all. We also helped the Wilmington Kiwanis Club celebrate their 21st, or 61st year, celebrating scholarships for students attending UNCW on May 15th. I got the opportunity to attend the state principal of the year banquet in Cary, and we wanted to say congratulations again to Christiane May for being the regional principal of the year. Last week, we held our annual retirement banquet and honored close to 1,700 years of experience retiring this year. We can't thank those individuals enough for their years of dedication, hard work, and service to New Hanover County Schools. We had the opportunity to show off our model classrooms at Masonboro and Anderson to the North Carolina Department of Instruction on May 29th. NCDPI is interested in helping us grow and pilot a literacy model classroom. We have had an extremely exciting year for school sports. Ashley's Boys Baseball and Girls Soccer Team played in the state championship this last week. Congratulations to our players and coaches for achieving at that level. That concludes my.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. And we'll carry on now with our call audience. Ms. Mason?
Thank you all for being here and for participating in local government. Let's start off with Anakin Garrick.
All right. Am I good to start? All right, sweet. Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I am Anakin Garrick, and I'm proud to say that I'm the product of New Hanover County school system. I attended Pine Valley Elementary School, Roland Grace Middle School, and graduated from John D. Hogard High School in 2017. I'm grateful for education and the foundation which these schools gave me. I thrived in English. I struggled in math, and I found the love for my future college degree and career in my elective sports marketing class. Another program that's really stuck with me is family and sexual education. The information I received from the fifth grade to the eighth grade is information I continue to use to this day. The Family and Sexual Education Program is designed to equip students with the information and resources to help them navigate not only the physical aspects of life, but cognitive, emotional, and social aspects of life, covering a wide array of topics such as body changes that are associated with puberty, interpersonal relationships, consent, STIs, anatomy, sexual violence, contraceptions, pregnancy, and health resources, and so, so much more. Sex education gives young people age-appropriate, medically accurate, and culturally relevant information and answers to their questions about sex and relationships without being shamed or judged. I only have two minutes with you today, so I leave you with this. Teenage years can be tricky. I sure would not go back. Parents, I know you don't want to hear this, but they're growing up, and it's inevitable that one day they will run across a situation in which the Family and Sexual Education Program will have covered. So, why not provide them with a program that will prepare them for their future? Knowledge is power. In order to make good decisions, one must be informed. Therefore, I believe that the students of New Hanover County Schools deserve the right to be taught comprehensive sexual education in order to achieve positive outcomes for themselves and their partners and their community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Hello again. Tim Merrick from Carolina Beach. And here we are again, me talking about governance, me talking about the appropriate role of the school board, you talking about books that scare you, you taking away freedoms, you inserting homophobia and racial intolerance into our classrooms, you are in violation of Policy 7205, Section B, Standards of Professional Conduct. Number 26, employees shall ensure dignity and nondiscrimination in schools by not compelling students, teachers, administrators, or other employees to affirm or profess belief in the concepts that, F, any individual solely by virtue of his or her race or sex should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological distress. You see, by taking away books, by taking away flags that reflect the lived experiences of children of color or LGBTQ plus children, you are causing them distress. You are causing them discomfort by denying them inclusion, by making them feel different. My question is, what is the protocol when a board member is in violation of their own restrictive, punitive, and puritanical policies? Ms. Barnhart, what credentials have you attained superior to those of the North Carolina School Library Association? None? Okay, then. Your opinions fall into the realm of political activism. Sometimes you say things, sometimes you say things that, you say political activism doesn't belong in our schools, so here you are. It would seem you're being ensnared by your own policies of intolerance. Oh, what a tangled web you weave when first you practice to deceive.
Lila Barnum and Abigail Blair?
My name is Lila Barnum, and this is my friend, Abigail Blair. We are sixth graders at the International School of Gregory. We were excited to be invited tonight, to this meeting tonight, to be recognized for our National History Day accomplishments. But we are also excited to be here because we want to speak about an issue under consideration, Battle of the Books. We participated in the Battle of the Books competition for the first time this school year. We had a great experience, and we enjoyed every book we read, even though we did not read every book on the list. We were able to choose the books from the Battle of the Books list that most appealed to us and our parents. One of my personal favorites was a book called Salt of the Sea. This book was eye-opening and gave us a different perspective of World War II. I even shared the book with my mom after loving it so much.
We would also like to point out that without intellectual freedom to research and learn about 1898, provided to us by our teachers, we could not have completed our National History Day film, and we wouldn't be heading to Washington, DC next week to represent New Hanover County Schools in the state of North Carolina.
We are grateful for the North Carolina School Library Media Association and our coaches for providing us with this opportunity, and we hope that we and all New Hanover County Schools students will continue to have this opportunity. And while we're disappointed that we feel we have to defend our right to read books, we hope you will take our thoughts into consideration and that you'll support the continuation of Battle of the Books. Thank you.
David Perry?
Good evening. As the old proverb says, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions." Back in the 2010s, our Republican General Assembly had the good intention of trying to pass the Emergency Powers Act to give our governor sufficient resources and power to deal with a temporary emergency situation. But unfortunately, much of the law was vague, subject to lots of different interpretations and just ambiguous. And then, when COVID came around in 2020, Governor Cooper used that ambiguity to rain down tyranny on all of our state for almost two years. Now, this was not our General Assembly's intention, but it was the result nonetheless. And you are in a similar situation with your policies tonight. You have the good intention of wanting to avoid having teachers using signs and flags and other displays in order to indoctrinate our children. I agree with that. We should be encouraging our children to become independent, critical thinkers. But the policy revisions are vague and ambiguous, and in my mind, still leave open the possibility that you could censor the First Amendment rights of our students. I say, please just bring it back to your policy committee and do it right. In closing, you know, when I get on the school board, one of my main priorities is to make sure that my grandson, Lucas, and all of our children and grandchildren get a high-quality education. But there's a priority above that, and that's to ensure that the constitutional rights of every parent and child in our school district is respected and never infringed upon. Thank you.
Angela Keaney?
Happy Pride Month and celebration of Juneteenth. Just words until you put action behind them. Performative posts and deflections, especially when used to mislead and then deleted, are not helpful. This board has changed the words equity to engagement, dissolved our student equity teams, canceled our equity summit, and funneled the money to celebrate only a select group of students who won't challenge them, ignored the authentic student voice, and made it a campaign slogan. You implemented petty policies to micromanage teachers on visual classroom displays, banned books, and attacked Battle of the Books. You target our family life education program to destroy what doesn't even belong to you in the fidelity of an evidence-based program that has shown drastic positive outcomes simply because it's Title IX compliant and inclusive to LGBTQ students. You promote guns and bullying, claiming to care about safety, while comparing SEL and appropriate expression of emotions to devilish behavior and shoving your own sadistic virgin of religion down our throats through more theatrics. On that topic, you failed to ever address our unsafe schools and ask the question of why children feel the need to bring weapons to school for protection. Could it be the prison culture you created? You're responsible for the self-harm and mental health issues of students because of the hatred you spew to children who don't fit in your box. You tell yourself that none of this is your fault because you weren't here during the actual sexual assaults that are not responsible, yet your complacency and failure to act has cost the lives of victims and their family. But maybe your denial helps you sleep at night. A quick reminder, you cannot revise the federal law, that's Title IX, and June marks the deadline to uphold the settlement in the first round of sexual assault victims. We accompanied them and handed them the mic last year to remind you of you intentionally what you put them through. For five years of protecting pedophiles, not one of you acknowledged them. The contempt charges are pending. More sexual assault and EC cases will be opened, and you'll continue to argue about your unethical and underqualified choices for litigation at our expense.
We have this unshakable hope, firm and secure as an anchor for the soul. I pray the Lord answer and deliver you from all danger. The name of the God of Jacob set you safely on high, and supernatural help be sent from His sanctuary. May He support you from Zion's fortress and remember every gift you have given Him. May Yahweh give you every desire of your heart and carry out your every plan as you go to battle. When you succeed, we will celebrate and shout for joy. God will answer your prayers, and we will praise Him. Yahweh brings victory to His anointed ones, giving them... has cost the lives of victims and their family. But maybe your denial helps you sleep at night. A quick reminder, you cannot revise the federal law, that's Title IX. And June marks the deadline to uphold the settlement in the first round of sexual assault victims. We accompanied them and handed them the mic last year to remind you of you intentionally what you put them through for five years of protecting pedophiles. Not one of you acknowledged them. The contempt charges are pending. More sexual assault and EC cases will be open. And you'll continue to argue about your unethical and underqualified choices for litigation at our expense.
We have this unshakable hope, firm and secure as an anchor for the soul. I pray the Lord answer and deliver you from all danger. The name of the God of Jacob set you safely on high and supernatural help be sent from His sanctuary. May He support you from Zion's fortress and remember every gift you have given Him. May Yahweh give you every desire of your heart and carry out your every plan as you go to battle. When you succeed, we will celebrate and shout for joy. God will answer your prayers and we will praise Him. Yahweh brings victory to His anointed ones, giving them all they ask for. Our deliverance cry will be heard in His holy heaven. By His mighty hand, miracles will manifest through His saving strength. Some find their strength in their weapons and wisdom, but our miracle deliverance can never be won by men. Our boast is in Yahweh, our God, who makes us strong and gives us victory. Our enemies will not prevail. They will only collapse in defeat while we rise up full of courage, praising the King of Kings and Lord of Lords. For He empowers us to seize what has already been established ahead of time, an unshakable hope, holding us to God Himself. I declare in Jesus' name, the children of New Hanover County know their God-given identity as light bearers to the world, devastating the kingdom of darkness, releasing God's glory, turning America back to its original intent as declared at Cape Henry in 1607.
Christina Mercier.
There are a lot of people speaking on Battle of the Books tonight, so I won't spend all my time on the topic. However, I did want to say, when a parent has an issue with a book, the first step is to speak to the school. Did this happen? And if not, why? If you don't want your child reading a book, you speak to the source and don't make a mountain out of a molehill. There are two quotes from Ban This Book that resonated with me that you should consider. Banning a book is an act of ignorance, a refusal to engage with differing opinions. And nobody has the right to tell you what books you can and can't read except your parents. What I really want to talk about tonight is the importance of educated and trained family life teachers. Many years ago, when I was in school, the person who gave the worst information about human reproduction was my biology teacher. My small conservative North Carolina county had an amazing sex ed program back in the early 1980s that started with learning the correct names for all body parts and then progressed to the biology of reproduction. We also covered sexually transmitted diseases and birth control, topics very important in the early days of the AIDS epidemic. I didn't realize until I was in college, in college biology, how comprehensive my reproductive education had been. My professor gave our class a pre-test and most people got one or two questions correct and I got 18 of 20. Yet my sophomore year of high school, same school system, I was in biology and my class had reached the reproductive unit in the book. Imagine my surprise when my teacher started lecturing about the time of the month when a woman is most fertile. He stated that the days before her menstrual cycle were her most fertile days. I knew it was wrong. We'd been told for years that a woman is fertile when she ovulated, which is usually in the middle of her cycle. I raised my hand and challenged him. He was an adult, married, and had two children. How could he believe this? Of course, he didn't accept what I said and I knew further discussion was futile. To this day, almost 40 years later, this, his misinformation bothers me. I'd always hoped no one relied on his statement and got pregnant because of it, but it's an example of why willing and trained instructors are so important in family life.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Tucker and I have actually taught in the Family Life Education Program for the last 24 years. Forty-one years ago, this program was built by the school board according to Policy 3540, which has always given parents the choice of selecting a medically accurate curriculum. No matter the choice they make, it will be taught by a highly-trained teacher and will align with their family values. The current proposal to make the four Family Life educators full-time health teachers will effectively eliminate the entire program. It is unsustainable to meet the requirements of the board policy under this new restructuring. This proposal also completely eliminates the fifth-grade Growth and Changes classes. This year, 94% of families have opted into the fifth-grade program, 94%. How can we possibly cut this? Since this program was board-approved decades ago, New Hanover County's teen pregnancy and STI rates have stayed well below the state and national averages. The cost of eliminating this program will be shouldered by the parents and the community. Ms. Bradford, at the last board meeting, you said that you would rather be preventive than reactive. That is exactly what this program does. Dr. Faust, I've taught your daughter. Mr. Wildabour, your children have opted into our programming. And your wife, as our supervisor, helped make the program more accessible to parents in the middle schools. Ms. Craybill, you've always been a fierce supporter of Family Life Education, but we know you can't fight this dismantling alone. Please, find a way to keep Family Life Education programming operating as it was intended by giving parents the choice they want and deserve. Our team is open to discuss solutions with you at any time. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello. I teach history at the University of North Carolina Wilmington. History, like almost all aspects of life, requires critical thinking skills. This is a skill that's provably harder to cultivate in a world of digital engagement and rapid distractions. And I've seen students struggle more and more to determine what is valid evidence for a broader claim, to examine statements for their truth and validity. One way young people, which those young scholars of history are great examples of, learn to think deeply is by reading a diverse array of books with age-appropriate content, which cannot realistically be defined as not including anything would rather they never have to deal with. We underestimate our children ages nine, 10, 11, 12, and up when we think that they are so weak that they will immediately be inspired to run away or to buck all of their familial values just because a character in one book behaves in a way maybe unfamiliar to them. And we seriously discount our own parenting as well. That's what we're here for. I have two boys finishing second and sixth grade. My older son has always been an eager reader with a strong preference for fantasy and sci-fi. He has benefited enormously from participating in the Battle of the Books for three years now. He's a pretty competitive kid and this competition has challenged him to expand the sorts of books he reads, introducing him to new favorite authors. From there, he's read about historical topics that I don't think he would have otherwise. You know, he doesn't want to be a historian because his mom is. He's learned about American heroes of Pearl Harbor, World War II, 9/11, and more. He's increased his critical thinking skills, which helps spur a stronger interest in science and math. He knows reading books doesn't just teach kids how to read books, it teaches them how to be healthfully curious and to solve big problems, problems they will have to have in the adult world. Please don't deprive my seven-year-old of that opportunity by eliminating an optional valuable program.
In 2013, Colorado updated their requirements for teaching sex ed in schools. Sex ed is not mandated in Colorado and in districts that offer it, it is an opt-out program. However, in the districts that offer sex ed, it must be comprehensive. Most school districts start in the fifth grade. It must include medically accurate, culturally sensitive information based on science. It must include accurate information on the human reproductive system with the students being taught the accurate names and functions of the respective body parts. It must teach about methods to prevent unintended pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases, including HIV/AIDS. It must include information about abstinence, all FDA-approved forms of contraception, and be taught in a cohesive, integrated, and objective manner so youth are empowered to make decisions based on their individual needs, beliefs, and values. It may not emphasize abstinence as the primary or sole method of contraception. The program may not exclude the health needs of lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender individuals. The program must include how to communicate consent, recognize withdrawal of consent, and understand the age of consent. These sound like bad ideas? Information that our children should not be exposed to? Well, in the five years after the law went into effect, the abortion and birth rates among 15- to 19-year-olds dropped by 57%. Doesn't that make the Family Life program sound like a good idea?
Fear represses faith. Fear holds back our boldness to believe and to love. It separates us from God. It's so pervasive, the Bible says, "Do not be afraid" 365 times. So I ask, why are you leading in fear and not from a place of faith? Most decisions this board has made are rooted in fear. You're afraid of transgender students, so you pass Policy 3620. You're afraid of the book stamped, so you banned it. You're afraid of what teachers might teach, so you pass Policy 7205. You're afraid of LGBTQ plus students, so you manufactured an emergency. Now you're afraid of Battle of the Books, that your child might read something you disagree with. Why? Is it because you're afraid to have a conversation with your child, that you will not be able to defend your values, that you lack parenting skills? My family refuses to carry the weight of your fear. I'm not afraid. I have confidence when I talk to my child about ideas that challenge our worldview. I have confidence I can teach them. I have confidence in my parenting and I have faith that my children will be okay. I'm not afraid because my faith is built on truth, a foundation that cannot be shattered. Your fear exposes your shaky foundation and your lack of faith. Do not be afraid, "For I am with you," the Lord God says. To obey this command, you must release your fear, give up control, and lean into faith. Pharisees couldn't do it, so just like you, they made more rules and restricted rights. Like you, their power, their desire for power and control was their idol, so much so, they rejected Jesus. Will you continue leading in fear like the Pharisees? Or will you lean into faith and lead with knowledge, truth, love, and understanding? Do not be afraid. Do not push your bigoted and hateful fears onto us. Happy Pride, lead with love.
Veronica McLaurin Brown. Yes, we did call Yolanda.
Good evening. It's been more than a year since Ms. Varnum gave a presentation on suspension data at a board meeting. Are some of you afraid of the numbers? As of April of this school year, 43% of 5-, 6-, and 7-year-olds who have been kicked out of school have been black children, even though they represent only 17% of the school population. And 67% of 5-, 6-, and 7-year-olds who have been suspended have been special education children, even though they represent only 13% of the school population. Our special ed children are probably the neediest children. And when they misbehave, they need more support, not no support. They should not, they should not represent 2/3 of the kindergarten, first, and second grade out-of-school suspensions. And what kind of improvements in these numbers can you, can we anticipate next year? Well, with fewer teachers, teacher assistants, counselors, and social workers, probably none. Some of you are failing our children by dismantling public school education in New Hanover County. The fact is, we need more educators to keep our children learning and thriving in school. Demand funding, demand the funding our children need, and revive Short Term Suspension 4351. If principals are in fact calling K-2 parents, then put it in the policy.
At the April 23, 2024 Policy Committee meeting, Ms. Mason and Ms. Bradford described a discussion they had with elementary principals about calling a parent of a 5-, 6-, and 7-year-olds before a decision is made to suspend a child. Ms. Mason reported that, quote, "Principals are already contacting parents. They have constant contact with parents." Ms. Bradford said, quote, "We got a wealth of information from them and when they were done, I was convinced they are doing this." That's remarkable news. But one has to wonder why it took 12 months for the principals to finally speak up. Law of our children originally asked the school board to revise Short Term Suspension Policy 4351 so that principals and K-2 parents would have a discussion before a determination was made to suspend a child on April 18, 2023. No one thought to ask the principals about it for 365 days? Or maybe they weren't all calling parents until recently. In any event, we are thrilled that the elementary principals fully support the practice. Now it's time for the policy committee to do their job. Because no principal is obligated to make a call if there's no policy. Principals are relieved of the duty to make the call if there's no policy. Add the sentence, "Principals will call K-2 parents after the investigation is over and before they make a decision to suspend 5-, 6-, or 7-year-olds to Policy 431. Do your job, serve our children."
Hello. My name is Sadler Selby and I'm completing my first year at New Hanover High School as a ninth grader. Battle of the Books has been a wonderful constant in my life and has boosted my confidence and academic mindset, has gifted me with incredible peers and teachers, and most importantly, has enriched my life with really great books. I want to take this opportunity to discuss empathy and ignorance and how reading affects both. I am a one person with one life experience in a world of many people with many different life experiences unlike mine. Now, I could choose to draw a line in the sand that encompasses me and people who live akin to me, attempting to block others out due to fear or misunderstanding. Or I could try to learn more about others' lived experiences to understand what they're going through and better myself in the process. One way to do that is by reading. When reading, I learn more about the real-world experiences, emotions, and situations of others. Often when participating in Bob, I read books I would have never even heard of if they hadn't been on the list. Those books, the books I believe will be uninteresting or uneventful, often turn out to be the most thought-provoking and interesting books. And I learn from them more than the generic famous author fantasy book I look forward to reading the most. Empathy is something that is learned, not gifted. And through reading, we can learn not to run away from others and retreat to our own little corner, but step out of that corner and open our eyes to the bright, diverse, and interesting world around us. Battle of the Books has been around in various forms for over 100 years and has been incredible for so many people. It is completely voluntary and you do not have to read every single book if you feel it goes against your values and opinions. There is an incredibly strenuous selection process and even though it is an outside organization, AP, Beta, Math Counts, and many other clubs/groups in New Hanover County are as well. So, instead of choosing to only think about your life experience, choose to think of all of the life experiences of the students in this county whose lives could be bettered by this program. Thank you.
I'm in sixth grade and I'm a student at Williston Middle School and I've always loved to compete in Battle of the Books. I've competed in this exciting event ever since I was old enough and love the books selected for it. It helped me discover some great new books and authors. A good portion of these I have reread and recommend for people like my brother, who is in second grade and can't wait to join Battle of the Books. One of my absolute favorites was on the list from when I was in fourth grade called Ban This Book by Alan Graz. Alan Graz is one of my favorite authors of all time and also wrote many other books that made the list in other years, like The League of Seven from last year. The reason I like Ban This Book is because it is about a character who loves to read, just like me. She is faced with a challenge when someone starts banning books for ridiculous reasons. In the end, the main character and her friends come up with a plan to thwart the antagonist and protect their reading rights. Some say that books like this are inappropriate for children like myself. I personally don't agree with that. But if some parents do not wish for their child to compete in Battle of the Books, they can choose not to sign the permission slip required to compete instead of trying to ruin the fun for everyone.
Glendora Mullins. Natasha Tu.
Good evening. Biden's Department of Education has recently released a revised Title IX rule that expands the definition of sex discrimination to include various factors as sex stereotypes, sexual orientation, and gender ideology. The new Title IX regulations jeopardize student safety and privacy, destroys fairness in women's sports, is unconstitutional, eliminates due process, compels speech, and strips parents of their fundamental right to raise their children and direct the upbringing of their child, including decisions regarding their education, their medical care, morality, and religion. I implore all board members to recognize the potential impact of this revision and remember that school districts are not obligated to align their policies with the new regulations at this time. Biden's Title IX would require schools treat students who suffer or claim to suffer from gender dysphoria as though they were the opposite sex, that male students who identify as a female must be allowed access to facilities designated for females like bathrooms, locker rooms, and to participate in women's sports and organizations. Teachers and students must refer to a gender dysphoric child by his or her preferred pronoun or alternative name, and there are no formal documentation that would be required to affirm this, the gender identity. Other Title IX repercussions could include when a female student opposes having a male on a team or in an organization that is intended for females only, or who feels uncomfortable sharing a locker room with a male. The female in opposition may now not only incur social stigma, but also the possibility of legal repercussions for her school, team, and organizations. Allow me to remind you, no child is born in the wrong body. Boys and girls are perfect as they are. Gender ideology is a cult and has no place in school. Thank you.
Barbara Garo.
Good evening. Do you all remember September 1, 2023? That's when four members of the Board of Education did not trust the professional judgment of Ashley High School's lead K through 12 social studies teacher, lead K, six through 12 English language arts teacher, lead K through five teacher, Teacher of the Year, High School Principal of the Year, and Lead Media Coordinator, as well as the districts' Lead Media Coordinator, Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year, Elementary English Language Arts Specialist, Social Studies and World Language Curriculum Specialist, Secondary English Language Arts Specialist, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Assistant Superintendent of Technology and Digital Learning. The board voted four to three on that date to ban the book stamped. Later, they even updated some policies related to that. Now the same four board members do not trust the professional judgment of teachers and principals as to what they can display in school. Last month, they started updating a policy about that, but these same board members trust principals when they say they are calling parents of five, six, and seven-year-olds before they decide to spend, suspend a child. Though, there's no need to update the short-term suspension policy 4351. You only trust the subject matter experts when it fits your narrative. Revise policy 4351, and please don't be hypocrites.
Holly Wiggly.
Hi, I'm Holly Wiggly, and I am here to show support for the Family Life Program in New Hanover County. This program has been in existence for over 40 years. Family Life is a value-comprehensive sexual health education program taught by highly-trained teachers. With this program, parents are provided a choice of how they want their childrens in grades five through eight to learn about physical, emotional, and social changes of puberty and adolescence. This program is well-respected in the community and has won many awards. My daughter is in the fifth grade and came home from her lessons with so much knowledge and without a fear to talk to me about what she learned. She raved about how the teachers made the lessons so interesting. The teachers who lead these lessons are experts who are familiar with working with children during this important time of transition in their lives. The teachers are able to use their expertise to teach this important subject matter in a manner that ensures no one is embarrassed. For my daughter, this was especially important because it took out all the jitters she had about puberty and being a woman. It is imperative that these lessons continue to occur in the manner that, in the same manner, and continue to be taught by these same knowledgeable teachers in the future. Instead of relying on PE teachers who are already spread thin to add the additional weight of this curriculum, we should continue to utilize the same program that has been super-successful for so many years.
Peter Rawich.
When the school board writes or revises and then adopts a policy or regulation, who's responsible for monitoring the implementation of it? Whose job is it to report back to you on the effectiveness of the new or revised policies and regulations? And who's responsible for putting those reports on the agenda and inviting the subject matter experts to speak publicly about them? On November 1, 2022, Regulation 4302 on the Rules for the Use of Seclusion in Restraint Schools was revised to include the following sentence. "As of the 2023-24 school year, rooms designed specifically for seclusion will no longer be operational for seclusion." So, this past school year, there were no seclusion rooms. Great. There used to be hundreds of seclusions annually. So, how is dangerous behavior being addressed now? Are you hiring more teachers, teaching assistants, counselors, social workers, and behavioral specialists? Are strategies from the lives in the balance training being used? And how exactly are you counting students who have been secluded in a space that is not a seclusion room? There was a time recently when most people were unaware of the existence of seclusion rooms. Please add seclusion rooms to next month's agenda and give us an update on how well the revised regulation is working. Thank you.
Loretta Stackhouse.
The last time Ms. Barnum was invited to give a presentation about out-of-school suspension at a school board meeting was May 2, 2023. During the 2021-22 school year, under the old short-term suspension policy where five, six, and seven-year-old children could still be kicked out of school for minor infractions such as showing disrespect or, as well as for serious offenses, there was a total of 74 out-of-school suspensions in kindergarten through second grade. Only three of those suspensions were for serious offenses. Two were for fighting, and one was for an assault on a student without a weapon. This school year, as of April, there, where our youngest learners can only be kicked out for serious offenses such as an assault, there has been 83 kindergarten to second-grade out-of-school suspension. Data from the, for the next two months most likely will bring that number even higher. But for now, three serious suspension offenses versus 83 serious offenses, that's an increase of a whopping 2,667%. Is, if that is not an emergency situation, I don't know what is. The policy is not working. Why is there so many more serious offenses? Ms. Bradford, please invite Ms. Barnum to share the in-school and out-of-school suspension data from this school year at the next board meeting. Please revise short-term suspension policy 4351 by putting in writing what elementary principals say they are doing. Thank you.
Harmony Speiser.
Good evening. My name is Harmony Speiser, and I am a rising sixth grader at N H C S. I'm a regular kid, ripped jeans and all. I am here to talk about my experience with the Battle of the Books. I have very fond memories of the past two years, reading books and chatting with Ms. Lori Schwartz, my school librarian at Battle of the Books. Battle of the Books helped me pick books off the shelves I never would have thought to read. I love having competition from other schools and enjoy reading different genres and styles that are in the Battle of the Books list. Students should be able to read about difficult topics and ask questions about these topics shamelessly. This should encourage students to learn more about the world around them and spark their interest in other books with similar genres and topics. I feel strongly that we are not being forced to read books. You get to pick and choose from the list, and if the title is not for you, just pick another book for Pete's sake. We have the option to join, and I am glad I chose to do so. The Battle of the Books generates confidence by having a student score the winning point of a match by answering, "In which book does a character say, 'I am currently unpacking an order of two burritos and one plate of veggie nachos, hold the sour cream.'" The student replies, "Not if I can help it," by Carolyn Mackler. Where else can you get that unique confidence? Today, I still read and reread the books I have loved. I am proud to receive a certificate of completion for the Battle of the Books, and unfortunately, I was not comfortable to bring it today because I was afraid I'd lose it and it might be my last one. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen and board members, as a parent, I strongly advocate for the fundamental right to guide and nurture our children according to our beliefs and values. It is our sacred responsibility to instill in them the principles and knowledge we deem appropriate for their development. When it comes to sensitive topics such as gender identity, I firmly believe that it is the role of parents, not educators, to engage in these discussions with our children. While educators play a vital role in shaping young minds, they must respect the boundaries of parental authority. Every child is unique, and their upbringing should reflect the values and beliefs of their family. By respecting parental authority on such matters, educators can foster an environment that focuses on academic development of our children. Furthermore, allowing parents, not educators, to address these topics ensures that they can tailor the conversation to their child's individual needs and level of understanding. This personalized approach promotes open communication and strengthens the bond between a parent and their child. In conclusion, I firmly believe that educators should refrain from discussing topics related to gender identity with our children. Instead, let us uphold the crucial role of parents in guiding and shaping the lives of our children. Thank you.
Adele McMurtry.
Last month, when advocating for the Family Life Program, I came prepared with a practice speech. Today's a bit more off the cuff. As I see how our efforts have progressed and the feedback from those who misunderstand, misrepresent, and do not value the distinguished Family Life Program and all it offers to support our community's children and parents, I'm here with a heavier heart than last month. This is compounded by the new attack of the Battle of the Books. When presented with a frustrating and somewhat infuriating situation, I always make a conscious choice to come from a place of curiosity, and that's where I am now, asking the questions, particularly of the Bees, Ms. Bees, Ms. Bradford, and Ms. Barnhart, and your supporters. What happened to you? What happened in your homes growing up? What happens in your homes now? What could possibly occur to have you be so terrified to have a difficult conversation or teaching moment with your children or grandchildren? What could have occurred for you to be so afraid of these conversations that instead of opting out of voluntary programs for your families, it appears to be your ultimate goal to take them away from all? To even recommend silencing the student voice? My children will thrive as our family values difficult conversations, as we know diversity, equity, and inclusion provides a brighter life, growth, and a well-rounded understanding for all. I am concerned about one thing. My daughter, who just performed her National Anthem that ends with liberty and justice for all, is a mini-me. She stands up to bullies, and she stands up for what is right, as attested by parents who have thanked us for her strength and presence in the protection of their children in the past. By your continued choice of censorship and sheltering of our community's children, how many bullies coming from a place of ignorance are you creating? Bullies that she will find the need to stand up to in the future. Get comfortable with the tough conversations, as you are here for all of us. Thank you.
Last call for Ren Olsky.
My name is Ren Olsky, and I am here to talk about the restrictions and bans that are being put on Battle of the Books. I am a junior, a rising junior at Wilmington Early College, and I have been competing in Battle of the Books for five years. I also created the petition that has been circulating around the state for supporting Battle of the Books. This school board, this school board has talked about beginning to implement, implement rules restricting books that are put on the to-read list. This movement would, will go as far as to ban the competition in the county, instead make a local version. This means that no state, this means that there will be no state competition, a feature loved by the participants. If it is restricted, it would cause the book choosing duty to be moved away from educators and librarians. This would cause the purge of diverse experiences and situations that would be shared through these books. The competition is an important part of supporting reading to kids of all ages. It is also important to exposing kids to experiences and people of all backgrounds. This is beneficial to nurturing a child's empathy and emotional development, especially to those that are less fortunate than them. It would also move the responsibility of creating this competition to the teachers and librarians of the schools. These duties include finding funding and creating over 1,000 questions for the books and finding a location and judges for the competition, and also supply dozens of copies of each book to each school. This would be on top of the works and duties these staff members already have. This means that these tasks may not be done at all. This would take away the competition for many children who may have loved participating before. Thank you for your time, and can I give you...
And this concludes our call to audience.
All right, thank you to all, everyone who participated in the call, the audience. Board members, do we need a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Please be back on the dais at 6:50. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if we could get board members back on the dais, please. Board members back to the dais.
Okay, we need to have all board members back, please. It is that time. We can go ahead and start up. We have a long meeting ahead of us. All right, we do have, here we go.
Sorry.
You all right? You good? All right, we'll carry on. I do want to make sure I'm correct. D is correct, right, Ms. Craybill?
Do what?
You're kind of the key person on this one. We're going to, policy consensus is next, and we...
I thought consensus was next.
I just said that.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consensus items, I'm sorry.
Regular consensus, yes, sir.
Consensus items, I'm looking at, reading it wrong. Sorry. But it, D, we need to pull off, correct?
Yes, I need to be pulled off of D.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we accept all the items with the exception of D. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
Yeah, I...
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So, we had a rather robust discussion at Agenda Review about all of the contracts with this. I didn't have a problem with any of them, but I'm just wondering if we need to somehow go back and address those. We had some questions that were out there that we were going to get some answers on. One of those was the, and I'm not saying to pull them off, I'm just asking the questions. We, the travel tracker software, and we had questions about the Dragonfly Athletics. I'm fine, but I didn't, I just didn't want us to move on without having those contract things resolved. So, if any other board member would like to chime in, then, or not, I'm good.
Does any other board member have a concern about Dragonfly or any other ones that...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
With, with that, Ms. Barnum said she would put it in the board memo as far as the leveling to be in that, so that was where my concern came from. It was fine.
Very good. All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting all except for D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 1, 2, 4, 5, 5-0. And now, I will also make a motion that we accept D. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And again, on this one, we'll have, we'll only have four votes. All in favor of accepting D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Again, at this time, passes 4-0. We'll move down to our next bit of business, which is policy consensus. And Ms. Mason.
The policies up. There are three that are from NCSBA updates. There's also some forms that we have finalized, and so I would make a motion to accept the policies.
Is there a second?
A second.
First and second, discussion. Ms. Craybill.
Yes, I would like to pull off 3200, 7300, 2230, 2300, 2310, and 2335.
Okay, could you say that? Yeah, I got 2230...
Okay, I'll go slow. 3200...
7300.
7300.
2230.
2230, 2300, 2310, and 2335.
All right, okay. I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to...
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Add one more. The universal application form.
Okay. All right, I would make a motion to, well, you've already made a motion to accept the others. So, let's vote on that, and then we'll take the individual policies. So, all, with the exception of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 now, policies, all in favor of accepting those policies or approving those policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. We'll start with 3200.
Mr. Wodeboor, if I could suggest that we just kind of go in numerical order, I think that would be, I think my comments on, on the...
Okay, so by my reckoning here, we would start with 2230, then, correct?
Yes. So, 2230 is board committees. The, the, this was passed before we decided officially, I guess, or we didn't decide, but we didn't put in the safety committee and the three subcommittees. So, we, the policy committee needs to look at that and come up with descriptions and the memberships and all that kind of good stuff. So, I think that that one should go back to policy, because we have a standing committee that we've created that is not reflected in here.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bradford.
I disagree. I looked at that when we were doing this a month ago, and ad hoc committees don't go on there, and, and the safety committee doesn't really need to be on there either.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know what ad hoc means. I mean, what ad hoc committee are you talking about?
Well, we have little adhocks under safety.
No, those are subcommittees. If you go back and listen, they're subcommittees.
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to let you have to make that decision.
Okay, well, why don't we vote on it? I think that's the most appropriate thing to do.
Okay, so, ma'am, I'm...
So, wait a minute, let's go ahead and get a motion from you first.
I would like to put add to policy 2230, safety committees. So, it would be understanding committees. So, it would be number seven, it wouldn't be seven, it would, it would slip in as number four, and then change the numbers, if we're going to keep it in alphabetical order. So, three would be policy, four would be safety committee, five would be the student scholarship, six would be Title IX.
Right on, right on that. Okay. Is there a second to add safety committee to policy 2230? I think it makes sense, so I'll, I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the motion was to send it back to policy, to add this, or are we going to add the description on the dais here tonight?
My motion was to send it back to policy, so that the policy committee can do the work that it's been charged, and not to try and create policy from the dais.
Okay, and I, we have a first and a second on that. Any other discussion? Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
And Mr. Wodeboor?
Yes. Okay, so that passes. We'll send that policy back to, that'll be policy 2230, going back to the policy committee. Numerically, our next policy would be...
Mr. Wodeboor, can we just move into the universal form, because that kind of follows right along with that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so, the, the form that is presented is, were, in the red insertions, were mine, and I appreciate the fact that we passed that in policy. But again, in there, we need to put in safety committees, at the very bottom where it says board standing committees. So, in, in the box that was vacated by equity, diversity, and inclusion, we can put safety committees in there.
Okay, so are you making a motion to just do that, or to send it back to safety?
The, I get, you help me out, team. The, we've already decided that it's a board standing committee, so if it's a board standing committee, then I think we could just put it in right here. If the, if we feel like the policy committee is not going to call it a standing committee, then, that, that mean, I don't, I don't want it to keep going back and forth. The, I'm okay with just sticking it in, but if we're not even in agreement that it's a standing committee, then it, the whole thing should go back to the committee to be handled at the same time.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you. I would be in favor of approving this now, and then when the policy committee updates policy 2230 and, and giving that description, to go ahead and update the universal application as needed, but these updates are needed, and so I would feel better updating it now, and then when policy picks this up, to also pick it up.
Ms. Mason?
My understanding, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, is that this is an interest form for the community to participate, and as it stands right now, the safety committee that we have established only consists of the seven board members. Would we need to add it to this if indeed it is only the seven board members that are part of it?
Ms. Craybill?
So, I, I guess, and I thought about that, Ms. Mason, and my thoughts were, did we want to exclude the parent and community component where we're talking about school safety, when everybody in the audience and in the community is invested in school safety? There are something, and since we are, have to meet openly in public about most of the conversations with the safety, then we wouldn't be talking about safety issues that we don't want the general public to know because of, you know, we don't want bad guys, you know, learning our program, kind of thing. So, I am in favor of allowing parents to sit on safety committees, and so that's why I think we, we should just go ahead and put it in. But it's up to, I guess the policy committee is going to have to decide if they, so that we can recommend to the whole board.
Ms. Bradford?
I would agree with Ms. Mason. As we created this, I never envisioned it to be open for application to the public. I can't say down the road, I wouldn't be in favor of that, but I haven't thought about it, so I'm not going to issue an opinion. So, doing it on the fly right now is not comfortable for me at all.
And, and I'm fine with that. The, the policy committee can look at them both together at the same time. I mean, that's my thoughts.
And I, and I'm going to speak up. I think that Ms. Barnhart's idea of, you know, pushing this forward, and then if the, when and if the policy committee, because I think the policy committee should be the one to, to discuss that, and, and that's their job, and then bring it back to the whole board. So, I think maybe we can put, approve the universal app, and then just as it, if it does change, and we do add that in. I would personally, every policy committee that I ever sat with at school level, we always had parents involved, so I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea at all. But I don't think we need to hold up the universal committee interest form, so I would be in favor of moving it, moving it forward, and then updating it as needed, so.
Second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of moving the universal app forward, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, passes 5-0. Next one we had by number was 2300. Ms. Craybill?
Yes, sir. So, board meetings, looking in here, the, in item 3C, Ms. Mason and I were, were pretty close on what our thoughts were. On that, the only other words that I wanted to suggest adding in to letter C would be in line two, where it says, "The purpose of providing, for the purpose of providing the board and the public with further information, blah, blah, blah." I would like to insert, "For reviewing the upcoming regular board meeting agenda," because that's what the Agenda Review is all about, and then, you know, and, and then continuing on with her suggested wording.
Okay, so could you say that one more time?
Yeah, so, in where it says, "Schedule for the purpose of," and right there, "Reviewing the upcoming regular board meeting agenda," and, submit those, you know, insert those words, and then it would continue, "And providing the board and the public with further information." So, I just wanted to submit those words, and I think that one could probably be done right here, because that's pretty easy. Or send it back to policy.
Is there a second? I'll take that as a motion, Ms. Craybill.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second? I mean, it makes sense to me, so I'll second that. Further discussion on it? Okay, Ms. Bowie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wodeboor?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Okay, so that will be added. So, let's take that one before we go any further. I'm sorry?
Which one was that?
2300. So, with the amended wording on 2300, I make a motion...
I have more.
Are you on that, on 2300?
The same one, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, in 3A and 3E, when it says, "At least 48 hours," so I'm assuming then, with 48 hours notice, that we won't have meetings on Tuesdays. Otherwise, that would require Ms. Bowie or Ms. Kedetsky to issue stuff on Sunday, when that is not one of their workdays.
Yes, Ms. Barnhart?
Just, it says, "At least 48 hours notice," so that is not going to mandate it be done on Sunday, but to say, "At least 48" would be at least Sunday, so before the only Friday would be appropriate as well.
So I am in favor of allowing parents to sit on safety committees. And so that's why I think we should just go ahead and put it in. But it's up to, I guess the policy committee is gonna have to decide if they, so that we can recommend to the whole board.
Ms. Bradford?
I would agree with Ms. Mason. As we created this, I never envisioned it to be open for application to the public. I can't say down the road, I wouldn't be in favor of that, but I haven't thought about it, so I'm not gonna issue an opinion. So doing it on the fly right now is not comfortable for me at all.
And I'm fine with that. The policy committee can look at them both together at the same time. I mean, that's my thoughts.
And I, and I'm gonna speak up. I think that Ms. Barnhart's idea of, you know, pushing this forward and then if the, when and if the policy committee, because I think the policy committee should be the one to discuss that and that's their job, and then bring it back to the whole board. So I think maybe we can put, approve the universal app and then just as it, if it does change and we do add that in. I would personally, every policy committee that I ever sat with at school level, we always had parents involved, so I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea at all. But I don't think we need to hold up the universal committee interest form. So I would be in favor of moving it, moving it forward and then updating it as needed, so.
Second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not all in favor of moving the universal app forward, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, passes five zero. Next one we had by number was 2300. Ms. Craybill?
Yes, sir. So board meetings, looking in here, the, in item three C, Ms. Mason and I were pretty close on what our thoughts were. On that, the only other words that I wanted to suggest adding in to letter C would be in line two where it says the purpose of providing, for the purpose of providing the board and the public with further information, blah, blah, blah. I would like to insert for reviewing the upcoming regular board meeting agenda because that's what the agenda review is all about. And then, you know, and, then continuing on with her suggested wording.
Okay, so could you say that one more time?
Yeah, so in where it says schedule for the purpose of, and right there, reviewing the upcoming regular board meeting agenda and submit those, you know, insert those words, and then it would continue, and providing the board and the public with further information. So I just wanted to submit those words, and I think that one could probably be done right here because that's pretty easy.
Okay.
Or send it back to policy.
Is there a second? I'll take that as a motion, Ms. Craybill.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second? I mean, it makes sense to me, so I'll second that. Further discussion on it? Okay, Ms. Bowie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be added. So let's take that one before we go any further. Sorry?
Which one was that?
2300. So with the amended wording on 2300, I make a motion-
I have a couple, I have more.
Are you on that, on 2300?
The same one, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So in three A and three E, when it says at least 48 hours, so I'm assuming then with 48 hours notice that we won't have meetings on Tuesdays. Otherwise, that would require Ms. Bowie or Ms. Kedetsky to issue stuff on Sunday when that is not one of their workdays.
Yes, Ms. Barnhart?
Just, it says at least 48 hours notice, so that is not going to mandate it be done on Sunday, but to say at least 48 would be at least Sunday, so before the only Friday would be appropriate as well.
I'm having a real hard time with that, with the 48, with the 48 hours for a Tuesday meeting because we all know how we get and we all know that Ms. Bowie works a lot of extra hours, and we don't wanna have it in policy that we're, that if we don't get it done by Friday, then she has to have it done over the weekend. So I-
Would you like to make a recommendation?
Yes, the, I would, I would say, I don't know why we're doing 48 hours and why, and I missed the, I missed the discussion again that Ms. Bradford and Ms. Mason had with the senior staff on what is wrong with two business days. Forty-eight hours is two business days. I missed the discussion.
Ms. Bradford?
It is my understanding, it is my understanding that this was language that was suggested by staff, which is why I voted for it. I attended the meeting and I voted for it. That's why we have a policy meeting. And rewriting policy on the dais is something that some board members complain about exhaustively, so-
Which we just did last month, so-
I don't think that we need to rewrite every single policy from the policy meeting. This was recommended by staff.
See a lot of eyes down to their desks, so if that's what they want, I'm not gonna push it because that's just ridiculous to fight over something so miniscule.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to accept policy 23, 2300.
Same.
And I'll second that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the amended, all opposed? Passes five zero. Next, we will have 2310. Ms. Craybill?
Yes, sir. So in letter A, and this really applies to the last policy too, but I got out of line of my things, when we're talking about, we typically, it is in letter A, in the blue, which is typically one week prior to the regular board meeting for to place items on the agenda. So it was the same in 2300, will generally occur, that these meetings have special, have specific times when we have, when we and the public have to submit information. And if we're saying typically and generally, that means there's no schedule and that we don't know, we might know of date changes, but the public doesn't know of those date changes. So I think we should take out typically and, and say one week. Like in the previous policy board meetings, 2300, interim meetings, regular board meetings are on the first Tuesday. Interim meetings are on the third Tuesday. And it appears that our agenda reviews usually are on the fourth Tuesday. So I think that we should be specific so that everybody knows when the dates are for submitting things to be on the agenda. And if we say typically and generally, that's not-
So you're saying just to remove the word typically?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure that, clearing, so you-
That's easy enough.
Make that motion?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
The motion to approve the policy as written.
Written, okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving 2310, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
That passes one, two, three, four to one. Next, we have policy 2335. Ms. Craybill?
Yes, let me pull that up. So the, in the title where, I mean, in the, the second, in the second line where it says regular and interim board meetings and agenda review meetings suggests that we take out the word meetings, so it would be regular interim and agenda review meetings so that we are not repeating. And then also, it looks as if on this one too, we've taken out the business days. So again, we're, we're counting days, we're counting weekends as days in there. And then I would also like to see in that last paragraph somewhere that it says, notice must be given to board members if supporting materials change. The, I, it has happened, it happens every single meeting that we have, that you prepare for the meeting ahead of time, go off on your day, you get here, and everything, and things have changed. And we don't get any notification that's happening. I look like an idiot every single time because I prepare early and then things have changed. So I, I don't like that, and I don't think it's appropriate.
And I'm going to stop us for just a moment. We have reached our time limit on this, so I would entertain a motion to continue to add maybe five more minutes to this discussion. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of adding five minutes to the discussion of these, I think we have one, two, three policies left, please signify, or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passes four to one. We'll give it an additional five minutes. Okay, Ms. Craybill, you finished your thought?
If we can just strike out the word meetings on 2335, then this board can just have that and change all they want. That's fine with me.
Okay, so the motion is to go to change the wording to regular and interim?
Take out the word meetings after board.
Right.
Mr. Chair, just a clarification, the and is already struck.
I know that.
Okay.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the word meetings.
Regular interim board and agenda review meetings. All in favor of that? Was there a second? I think there was. I'll second it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five zero. All right, so we have 2335, all in favor of accepting it with the new wording, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that passes. Going is 2335, 3200.
Okay, so that one, I continue to believe that we passed those erroneously. There was no emergency other than Pride Month was on its way coming, so maybe that was the emergency that we couldn't define. But the other thing is, I believe that we are vague on the word displays. And we heard some of our call, the audience, talk about that. Ms. Barnhart made, when she sent us an email, says the differences between flags and displays, what classifies a display, and we never really got to what that means. Does it mean social media? Apparently it does because we've had an issue about that this week. So I think that we need to be more clear on that. And also, with both of those policies, I don't think we need them at all because in the policy committee meeting, we added about 15 more things, I shouldn't say 15, we added about seven more things into that policy that are already covered in other policies. The only thing that was not covered in those policies were references to LGBTQ or other, other protected classes of minority classes. So I don't even think that we need this policy. There was no emergency. We've now added all these things that are already in 5210, but what we didn't take into account was the student organizations, they, they aren't listed, and policy 5210 says they are allowed. We didn't put in their parent support organizations, and policy 5210 says that they are allowed. And, and back on 3620 extracurricular activities, it says that students can post information about their events. And so those weren't put in. We didn't put in trade schools, we didn't put in military, we didn't put in seasonal decor or bulletin board information, all of these, and we didn't put in regular art. We put in student artwork. But if a teacher wants to have a nice calming picture of the ocean, that apparently is not allowed. So I, I am just so opposed to this. And then, and one last thing. And a teacher sent me, pardon me?
One minute left.
One, one last thing. And a teacher sent me information about, in the eighth grade curricula, one of the things they have to discuss is looking at a broad opportunity of events that are happening in their, in their world, which would mean civil rights kinds of things and LGBTQ kind of things, and, you know, all of those kind of things, so.
Ms. Bradford?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve policy code 3200, selection of instructional materials, C2, last paragraph, striking three items. Strike number one, other nations, strike other two, family photos, strike number three, student art. Otherwise, I move to pass the policy as it's written with those three strikeouts.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
First and second? We are out of time.
Comment on that. One of our board members just said creating policy on the dais. So we have two people here who are not-
Mr. Chair, I call the question.
Excuse me, I am talking.
I'm allowed to interrupt. I call the question.
And we are out of time for this, so, Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
No.
Ms. Barnhart? Mr. Wildebohr? And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Shockingly.
Ms. Craybill?
Sorry.
We're out of order. And finally, we're at 7300. Yes, ma'am?
We're out of time.
I move policy code 7300, staff responsibilities. I move to pass the policy, striking three items or phrase.
Point of order, we're past our five minutes, Mr. Wildebohr.
Letter A, I, strike number one.
Hold on a second, we have a point of order.
Other nations, strike family photos.
Excuse me, Ms. Bradford, we have a point of order. Go ahead.
You said five more minutes, and then you just told me we were out of time. So we need to hold off on 7300 till next one, that's done.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a point too, if I may?
Yes, sir.
We've been going about amending the policies that were presented and then doing a vote on the overall policy as amended. You didn't do that on the very last one, if you want to do that now.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the last policy, which was 3200. I thought we did, but maybe we didn't. Okay, all in favor of that policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes four to one. Again, we are at the end of our time, but we do have 7300 in front of us. We can either-
I make a motion, we move on and do that at the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone the discussion of 7300 till our next meeting, next regular meeting. Is there a second? If not, I would entertain a motion to extend time so we can discuss 7300. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend time for one minute.
Okay, we have first and second. Any other discussion? If not all in favor of extending time for one minute to vote on 7300, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Passes four to one. Yes, ma'am?
I move that we pass policies 3200, selection of instructional-
7300?
Oh, sorry, 7300, staff responsibilities, striking three items or phrases under letter A, I, strike out other nations, strike out family photos, strike out student art. Otherwise, I move to pass it as written with those three strikeouts.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second?
Could we read the things that she struck out again, just so everybody takes in the full brevity of this?
Please read that again. Ms. Bradford, would you please reread this?
Happy to. Other nations, family photos, student art.
Okay, there are first and second.
She needs to read them, ask her to read them.
I'm sorry, she did, but I stopped, so go ahead, please. Would you reread them, please?
Certainly. Other nations, family photos, student art.
Student art.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Please.
So what are we gonna do about when we are having discussions in our classrooms about other nations? And what are we gonna do about Forest Hills Global Elementary School and Gregory, International School at Gregory?
Quiet, please.
So if we strike those out, then that means those teachers are pretty hamstruck on, hamstringed, or whatever the word is, on being able to deliver their curriculum. And it also will be in violation perhaps of the NISIS evaluation tool, where teachers have to be able to put those kinds of things up to be welcoming and including in their classrooms.
Quiet, please. Okay, that's a good question. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
No answer to the question?
We're out of time. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Passes three to two.
Who were the three, oh, who, nevermind, thank you. Never mind, I can count.
All right, I believe that's the end. Quiet down, please. Thank you very much. We'll continue on. Next, we have our Head Start grant.
Unfortunately, we did not receive the update from the federal government, so we cannot at this time proceed, so we do not have anything to share. So we're gonna have to postpone that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on to legal services, Ms. Craybill, you were the one that brought this forward.
Um, yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we hire the Crossley, Collier, MacIntosh, Collier, Hanley, and Eads LLC law firm effective July 1st, 2024.
First and second. This motion, Ms. Craybill, Barnhart. Okay, discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend that motion.
Okay.
In adding Crossley, MacIntosh, Collier, et al. to join the Vogel Law Firm on our legal team as our forward-facing board attorneys and maintaining our other law firms, the rate should be the same across the board. I believe that's $255 an hour we're paying now for the top, the top tier there.
Okay, there's amendment, is there a second? Hearing none, we'll go back to the original motion. To extend, or to-
Hire.
To hires, thank you for getting me straight. The Crossley, MacIntosh, Collier, Hanley, and Eads Law Firm. Any other discussion?
To provide legal services for the board and the district effective July 1st, 2024.
Okay. Ms. Mason?
I'm not sure permission-wise what I need to do, but I'm just curious, last month when we had this discussion, it was vehemently opposed by individuals because it was stated that this particular law firm was unqualified. So I'm just wondering if there's any further information that I didn't get that changed the minds of individuals on the board.
I didn't change my vote, so, I haven't voted yet, so. Okay, if not, let's move forward with the count, please.
Mr. Chair, I do have one pointed discussion.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
I'd like to clarify because on their, on their bid, they were open to negotiations, so one of the things that I would like for us to consider is negotiating the terms.
And just in that thought, I think Ms. Sutton may have reached out to them.
I was asked to reach out and just confirm that the rates that were provided in the proposal were still current, and they provided some new information to me earlier today. The new partner rate is 250, the associate's rate is 175 an hour, and then the paralegal's 125. So that is less than what was the original.
What was the paralegal, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
What was the paralegal?
125.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second in front of us. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford? Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
No.
Okay, that passes three to. All right. Next on our list is number two, the Vogel Law Firm.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes, Ms. Craybill?
Um, I move that we eliminate the discussion on this one, since we're not using Vogel Law Firm, we don't need to waste our time on talking about his, his contract or his rates.
Okay, there's a motion to eliminate number two from our discussion. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Bradford?
If-
Excuse me. Excuse me.
You look at the minutes. On this dais last month, I made a motion that passed four to three to continue with the Vogel Law Firm. So it wasn't continue for five minutes, it wasn't continue until a board member decides to object the next time. It certainly looks to me like one board member is trying to reverse a decision that we made last month. And currently, the Vogel Law Firm is our law firm, and there was no end date on what the motion was that passed four to three. And so they continue as our attorney, so taking it off the agenda is not the right move to make.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We do have a motion, and second in front of us, to remove the Vogel Law Firm discussion from today. And I guess effectively that would end that discussion on the new contract, because I think there's at least two different contracts in front of us from the Vogel Law Firm.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I?
Please.
It was the will of the board at the last board meeting to continue with our law firm. That motion passed, and so it's the superintendent's role and the chair's role to effectuate the will of the board. Shortly after that meeting, our firm presented Ms. Sutton with a contract for the chair to sign on behalf of the board to keep our firm on as the board ordered. So frankly, the only step left is for the chair to sign the contract as presented in order to effectuate the will of the board as passed last board meeting.
Ms. Crable?
So, thank you for your comments, Mr. Vogel, but you're not a member of this board, so they don't count as far as in a voting capacity. I did go back specifically and listen to the meeting, and it said we will continue with the contract, and the contract ends on June 30th. So that there can't be anything more clear than that. If you submitted, if any of our clients or people that we hire submit contracts because they want to, then, you know, that's not how we operate. So I just wanted to make that clear, is I did listen to that conversation, and it said that we would continue the contract. And Mr. Vogel even said, you can vote if you want, and you said, okay, let's just vote. We didn't even have to vote on that, because it was obvious that we continue the contract until the contract ends, and we didn't have another legal counsel. So I take issue with a vendor who's, nobody else is here to represent themselves, and that he gets to think that he can make that motion, or make that insertion into our discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Bradford?
I strenuously disagree with my colleague's opinion. It is erroneous. I did not say contract, I said continue. She is mistaken.
Okay, well, so we have, the motion we have in front of us right now is to remove discussion of the Vogel Law Firm from today's discussion. I think we probably, my own personal opinion of this was, we probably should iron this out one way or the other, not just remove it, because if we remove it, it still leaves it out in this area, is, you know, what have we said, what have we not said? So I think we need to define that as a board today.
I will withdraw that motion to remove it. And then I would make a motion that we discontinue our contract with Vogel Law Firm that expires on June 30th.
Okay, so there's a motion to end.
End the contract with Vogel on June 30th, as we already have in place.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, first and second. Discussion of the motion to end Vogel Law Firm contract on June 30th. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
No.
Passes three to two. Moving forward, we have the SNC Law Firm revision. Again, there was a oversight, did not have all the parts we needed into, in that contract. I'll make a motion that we accept the new revised contract. Is there a second? Okay, so, Wildebor, Ms. Mason. Second, Barnhart, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Bradford, excuse me?
This latest version of the SNC agreement, the first one had for special education and related services under legal services. This one does not, it does have it mentioned in the title, but the first one did. And also, second question, did we get the insurance policies for Mr. SNC that were promised?
We did.
And did you get copies of them?
I did.
Thank you. I would think that you'd want to put what was the, one of the things in the first contract for special education and related services, put that back in. It was left out when I did a side-by-side comparison between the three versions that we have from them.
The wrong contract was uploaded, so we had this discussion during agenda review, and so the new contract is out there now. If you look now, that verbiage is in that legal services paragraph.
I downloaded this one at 2:00.
Yeah, it was uploaded after that. We realized it hadn't been replaced, so they have it on the screen now.
It's not in ours. Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend, I move to amend your motion.
Okay.
To take the term back from March 12th to 2024 to December 31st, 2025, to end December 31st, 2024.
Okay, there's a motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, discussion on that motion. Okay, we'll vote on the, did you have any?
Yeah, I just want to say no. I don't think that we need to do that at this point in time.
Ms. Bowie, please call, this is on the amendment only. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. Wildebor?
No.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Amendment is defeated. Back to the original motion. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Mr. Wildebor, I need to have that repeated, because I'm still not clear on what we're taking out.
Basically, all we added in was that the, we have added the insurance section in there, basically. Is that correct? Please tell me if I'm right.
This is the same contract that we went over at agenda review, except the first paragraph added the clarification that it was only for special education purposes. That wasn't included during agenda review, it wasn't in that paragraph.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
No.
Passes three to two, okay. Hearing on, next we have the Perner Spruill contract, not sure why that's here, but, Ms. Crable, I believe you brought that forward.
Oh, yeah, the only reason I asked for that one, not to discuss what's in it, I mean, not to discuss, you know, keeping it, but just to, I was kind of honoring Ms. Bradford's concept of making sure that our, that our contracts with our legal services were pretty much the same. And I'm okay with this contract.
Okay.
That was, the only point was for point of information.
Anyone else want to discuss that? If not, we will.
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am?
So we have a brand-new contract from Perner Spruill to continue them out for...
This is the same contract.
Okay, all right, sorry.
All right.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we just let that contract expire.
And I'll second that.
Motion second is Mason. So that motion, so let me pull it, I can pull it up, then we'll discuss it. So it is through June 2024, so it is fit, or it is ready to be expired. So you're saying to let it expire on June 2024?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, so then I have a comment. Why do we have, I didn't pay close enough attention, why would we have one of our EC company, legal firms expire in 18 months, and the other one that we did on the exact same day expire? I don't understand how that happened.
Ms. Mason?
Because we didn't get the contract from SNC Law Firm until about 10 minutes before we voted on it, and people did not get the opportunity to read through and see that timeframe.
Then I'd like to amend, then I would like to make a motion, I only brought it forward.
Well, she's already got a motion on the table.
I'm sorry, the motion is to get rid of them?
To let the June 30th date, no, you can amend that, but we got.
Yes, I would like to amend that.
Okay.
That we amend their contract to match that of the SNCs.
Okay, is there a second? Hearing none? All right, we have a motion and second to allow Perner Spruill's contract that ends on June 30th, 2024, to end. Any other discussion? If not, Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor? And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
That passes, okay. Ms. Sutton, you are up with the budget amendment.
So in front of you is a resolution that will allow us to continue operating. As you know, we do not have a current budget in place, we're waiting to hear back funding from the county, and also some state funding. And so this resolution would allow us to continue operations at a reduced level compared to this year, until we actually have that budget in place. Requesting the board's approval.
I'll make, let's have the motion first, and then we can have a discussion. I'll make a motion, we accept the interim budget resolution as provided. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any questions? Ms. Bradford?
Has this changed at all since we saw you last week?
It has not.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Not? All in favor of accepting the interim budget resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to take the unusual step of making a motion that going forward, when staff change a policy, they put the timestamp right in the title of the policy when it goes into our system. And then if you change it in the 48 hours before we have a meeting, you send an email to all of us, because I checked it to something, and it had changed after that. So it's very challenging for us to know what you've done, and to know what we're looking at, and we prepare for what we're looking at, and then you've changed it. So I'd like to have a timestamp on when it's put in here, it would say, this one would say 2024, 2025 interim budget, you know, original, you know, or whatever, version one. So if there's a version four or five, we know it instantly when we look. This is too confusing.
Yes, go ahead.
We can't add items to the agenda without having a supermajority, so I would like to take a vote on having this directive voted on.
Okay. Let's, so the directive from Ms. Bradford, first off, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now, we do need a supermajority to add that under new business. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Sure.
Sure.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Okay, so we can discuss it, because we have one, two, three, four.
Was it vote four to one?
One, two, four to one.
We made a supermajority, okay. The comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I made this exact request when we were talking about policy 23, whatever it was, for, let me find it so I don't give the wrong one, for advanced delivery of materials. 2335, thank you. And so I did not get a second on that, I didn't even, we didn't even discuss it. So it really is kind of interesting to me that when one board member suggests it, oh no, we can't even possibly think that, but when the other board member suggests it, then it is in a dire emergency again. Now, I can say what I want.
One of order, go ahead.
We are supposed to refrain. Debate must be confined to the merits of the pending question. Speakers must address the remarks to the chair, maintain a courteous tone, and especially in reference to any divulgence of opinion, avoid interjecting a personal note into the debate.
The chair rules, the point of order is well taken, so let's go ahead, and, you know, I think both of you, from what we're hearing, both of you are in agreement with this, it's just a matter of who said it at the right time. I apologize that, Ms. Crable, you didn't feel like it was at the right time. If I didn't vote for that, I do apologize to you. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll on this?
Yes, sir.
We don't do policies. We don't do policies, that's a problem.
Yeah, but, yeah, actually, good point, yeah. He brings up the point about that the policies, we do the policies, they don't do the policies, so maybe.
No, no, this isn't, this isn't the policies. This is things like contracts and budget amendments, things that we look at through our computer all week long and prepare for it, and particularly the night before, particularly the day of, we're looking at what the attachments are. Those would be, you know, Word documents as an attachment. When you save that attachment, you just save as, and you put a timestamp on it, and it makes it very helpful to know that we're looking at the original, or the second version, or the third version, or the 13th version, because time and time again, we have had these mistakes. And just for clarification, I ran this request into the chairman earlier in the week, and he suggested we move it to the Policy Committee, and I'm not willing to wait that long right now, because it's happened again tonight, and it's very frustrating to do this job with that continuing to happen to us time and time again.
Mr. Chair?
Wait.
Yes, yes, sir.
May I suggest that there be a motion articulated? I think the only motion that we heard was to add it to the agenda, which passed.
Okay.
I make a motion that we add a timestamp in the last, the last week of preparation to any attachments that are going to be on our screens that you have updated, you put a timestamp on it, and then you let us know, I have changed this policy. It's one email to all of us. I've changed this attachment, it has changed, please look at it, so that we're prepared when we get here.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Brinson, is that a possibility? Quiet, please. Okay, it is possible, okay. All right, any other discussion? Ms. Crable?
Where is this new directive going to land? Is it going to be in policy? Is it a procedure that Dr. Faust has to manage? Is it a procedure that the board chair has to go in and commit to looking at every time? Before we vote on a directive, then we need to know where it's going to land and who is responsible for that.
Dr. Faust?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have one. I do not think that the notification part is needed personally. I do understand from the procedural side, adding a timestamp, because we know where all of our documents are to be found. And so looking at an updated document, I think where the frustration from colleagues has been is when it changes, and when you think you're looking at the same one, because it's so close, just having that timestamp, I think, would do that. I don't think a notification to the board is given, otherwise, we're probably going to get like, I don't know, at least 15. Otherwise, we're probably going to get like, I don't know, at least 15 emails just from senior staff prior to a meeting. And I don't think that's necessary. I understand where the procedural frustration is coming from my colleagues. And so I don't think that this personally would land in policy because I believe this is a procedure that could be simply added minus the notification part. That's my two cents.
My one question is so that the board would, since this is a, I guess, we could use this as a working meeting. Ms. Bowie, in Assembly, where would it show up? Because once you lock it, then they're not able to put anything in. And so you have to unlock it for them to be able to put something in. So how does that, what would that procedure look like?
Thank you, Dr. Faust. I would need to confer with my representative from Assembly to see if there is a timestamp option. Currently, I'm not aware of one. However, I can reach out to my rep that supports this with Assembly to see if there is a timestamp option or if there's like a timeline tracker. And lots of times, you know, it's a simple remove the one version and upload the next version. So it's really not a full upload of the entire agenda item. It's more of just a change out of the attachment or an update to the content of the item. So I will need to confer with my Assembly rep to see if there is an option that we can monitor, that there is a monitoring system of the times that we revise or update the agenda items.
Ms. Chair?
I was not meaning a technical timestamp that you have to go in. For example, tonight or today, at some point during the day, under Legal Services, Item 3, it changed and somebody put saved as, you know, it's what you do in Word, you save as, revised Sync Law Contract, and then the date was on it. I'm just asking that you show us that you've revised something so that we don't have to go back and read every single attachment in our board packet, you know, the hour before a board meeting. And that's, somebody did this, I don't know who. We didn't get any notice. So if you weren't, you know, constantly looking at it, you wouldn't have known. But at least when we got here, we'd see the word revised, and that's helpful. I find in my work, I revise documents a lot. If I put revised and I put the date I revised it, somebody can look and see when I revised it and know if they've looked at that one. And it keeps us from confusing documents because in this last month or two, we have had some serious document confusion. And I really don't want to go forward with any more of that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second in front of us. Ms. Barnhart?
Mr. Chair, the last point of discussion on this, I feel like the directive would be better knowing that Ms. Bowie does use Assembly as our communication device. I think that she should research that because I believe this is a procedural thing to do that so that we can have a better process in place. So me personally, I am, cannot support this as the motion is presented, only because I think right now the directive is to direct staff to create a better solution. But I think we have to get a little bit more clarity on what the feasibility is because we're using this interface. And I think that if it's something that is a very simple fix to do, otherwise, it would be a different procedure that he would have to direct the staff to do as far as moving forward, so.
Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll again? This is on Ms. Bradford's motion to timestamp any changes and to email everyone before doing, or after doing it.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
That's defeated. We will carry on with our closed session at this point. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811 for the following purpose: to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board and to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment with the school system, or to hear or investigate complaint, charge, grievance by or against any individual employee. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll make the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We are in closed session. Please be there by 7:55.
All that it says is that.
I'm going to reset. I'm just about to. I gotta get back on here. All right. Just wait one second here for Ms. Mason to join us. All right, board members, we're back in open session. And we have in front of us the policy, excuse me, the personnel report. Is there a motion? Move to accept. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, put a seat in five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This is five zero. Anyone have any quick correspondence? Hearing none?
Yeah, I have some.
Oh, Ms. Crable?
I just would like to make note that we recognize all of our students, all of our staff in this month of June during Friday night.
Okay, thank you. All right, continuing on with announcements. The Turnaround Task Force will meet Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, in the Board of Education Center at 12:00 p.m. And the policy will meet on Tuesday, June 18th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Board of Education Center. The public, general public will have an option to view remotely on the New Henover County Schools TV YouTube. And again, as was mentioned before, we congratulate all the retirees as well as all of the graduates this week, so, and past weeks. So, at this point, I think the last order of business is to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, put a seat in five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, board members.